CC, can you hear me, CC?
We can hear you, Steve.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for joining. Sounds good, I'll send mine to you with ya.
We will call to meeting the June 24th meeting of the Lake County Planning Commission, we'll call it this meeting in order. Roll call, please.
Tritt's here.
Heather Lind. Joey Edwards.
Here.
Howard Tritts.
Here.
Steve Stevens.
Here.
Jason Rufo.
Here.
And David Clark Barrow.
All right, roll call of county commissioners.
Commissioner Mudge. Commissioner Fiedler. And Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Thank you. All right, any changes or additions to the agenda?
No.
All right, you seem none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to motion to approve the agenda.
A second?
Second.
All right, approval of minutes?
I'll approve the minutes also.
This was minutes for, I don't have the date for this one.
January 10th.
Minutes for January 10th, were you at that meeting, I hope?
Howard was not.
Oh, no, I wasn't at that one.
I wasn't at that meeting either.
So Steve was, Jason, Steve and Jason were.
All right, gentlemen, can I get a motion to approve minutes for the January 10th meeting?
We still don't have a moron for those, we'll have to carry him over.
Those are carried over, that's right. Very good. Uh, those are the latest minutes for approval?
Yes.
Thank you. And updates from staff?
So, um, for those who were not here at our June 10th meeting, um, we do have a major subdivision sketch plan coming up on July 22nd, that's Timber, Timber Ranch or Timber Ridge, Timber Ranch. Um, and that will be located off of County Road 4. Um, and it is a proposed 87 unit major subdivision planned unit development. So that sketch plan hearing will be on July 22nd and we'll, we sent out the overview, so please, please review the applications middles when you have time and consult with staff with any questions. And in addition to that application, um, expect a conditional use permit application coming as well for a group camp. Sugarloaf Mountain Ranch, they're applying for a group camp similar to a short-term rental in an existing lodge up by Turquoise Lakes, so, um, that is the other application that's pending. And short-term rental updates, I think this is David Clark Barrow joining as well.
That's lucky. Very good.
Okay, dates here. Um, short-term rental updates, we have eight standard licenses available. And, um, demand seems to be increasing for those. So there's a couple in the queue who are asking about those licenses, but eight left.
And of the licenses last year, how many did not renew this year, do you know? Do you remember?
Of the licenses last year, so...
Of people who had licenses last year, how many did not reapply?
So our renewal period is at the end of this year.
Okay.
So that's when we'll really weed those out.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, and all of those current license holders will have to meet the new regulations. So we're trying to send them reminders to get septic inspections.
So that grace period for septic and, and water and all that stuff was only for this year?
It was. So all of those license holders will have to meet the, the, the current standards.
Thank you. Any other business to review?
None, none for most.
All right, we will move on to new business, fast and fast. Uh, new business file number 24-18, the Birchback Countryside plan review.
All right. Okay. Let me minimize this. There we go. Okay, so the applicant, Tim Birch, is seeking, um, approval to construct a 452 square foot prefabricated yurt on his property for his...
Shut this, I hear them more than you. Don't, just don't slam it. Yeah, get it.
So the, the applicant is applying to construct a 452 square yurt on his property for his family's part-time personal use. Um, the property is approximately 44 acres and it consists of five mining claims known as the Redwood Group. And a backcountry structure does require a site plan review. And if approved or approved with conditions, then a backcountry structure license will follow. And that is an administrative process with our department. Okay. And I did not talk about the location. So the, the property, as you can see from these pictures, it's located east of Beaver Lakes Estates and it's accessed through Beaver Lakes Estates, traveling on County Road 52. And the property is accessed from a spur road off of County Road 52, also known as Dry Union Road. And here you can see the five separate mining claims that form the Redwood Group. And the applicant is proposing to construct the yurt on this claim right here, which is the beach load. So like I said, the yurt will be located on that beach load and the applicant was granted a variance for a pit privy in 2017 by the Board of Health due to difficulty in putting in a standard OWTS or septic system and well. So he already has a, a granted variance for that pit privy, it already sits on the beach load. And you can see the location of the outhouse right here in relation to the proposed yurt site. The applicant has verified that all setbacks from property lines can be met and that the setback from any body of water can be met as well. And so there is a stream that runs through the property, um, but the setback from that stream needs to be 50 feet and the yurt can, can meet that setback. The applicant will complete minimal earthwork required to level the site and he has done some very preliminary work. Um, this will be the location of the yurt on, um, the flat, flat piece of this parcel. And he will comply with the fire marshal's recommendations for tree felling for fire mitigation. So he has already been in touch with the fire marshal and, um, will work to meet all of those standards that the fire marshal has recommended, has recommended.
CC open up that cut for you?
Yeah.
CC, would you open this up so he can read this as well?
Sure.
I did get the, I understand. And I did get the dialogue online, so.
The PowerPoint?
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry, the script.
Oh, the script.
So he was, he wanted to look at that, but I did get the script.
So they will be, um, the applicant is not proposing to put in any fencing or any outdoor lighting. And, um, the yurt will be in olive green color with a dark red roof, so it should blend in really nicely with the surrounding environment. And the applicant has seen no evidence of any geologic or mining hazards on the, the property or surrounding the area where he wishes to place the yurt. So there are a few items that we wanted to bring up after review of the application. The first is that we did refer this application out to multiple agencies, two of those being Colorado Parks and Wildlife and the Lake County Conservation District. So both had concerns with noxious weeds, um, through the development process and suggested that the applicant develop and implement a noxious weed management plan. Tim has already done that and he has sent that to me and we forwarded it to CPW and the Lake County Conservation District. So if they have further feedback, they can, um, they can work with Tim directly on those plans. So both staff and CPW identified this property as being a high content, or having a high concentration of wildlife. Um, it contains wildlife corridors, um, big game habitat, uh, multiple, multiple species of wildlife utilize this property. So the Conservation District and CPW did recommend that the applicant work with them to create a conflict, a wildlife-human conflict management plan. Um, and the Conservation District did emphasize the applicant come up with a, um, trash, trash containment plan to make sure that it was wildlife-friendly and, um, minimize impacts to wildlife as much as possible. So we, we do suggest that the applicant work with CPW and the Conservation District to come up with that wildlife plan into the future. So conservation, the, um, Tim did originally pursue a lot consolidation to combine all five of those mining claims into one, which would effectively ensure preservation of the property into the future. Um, however, due to the expense of getting a survey in the backcountry and, um, the difficulty in doing it, he, um, he decided against it. So we do recommend that he work with county agencies, state agencies to, um, find a way to preserve the property moving forward. He has shown great stewardship of the land, um, since he's owned it, so we do applaud him and, um, we will work with him moving forward to, to find a way to potentially preserve the rest of the property. So, emergency services will, it will be very difficult for them to access Tim's property in the case of an emergency. So, um, if, if for some reason there is an emergency, we are suggesting a condition of approval that the property is addressed through our department. Um, we do addressing within our department and, um, and marked on County Road 52 very clearly with a distance to his property. Just so if emergency services does have to go up there for some reason, they'll know where to go. And finally, we did receive feedback today, so Tim did share some, um, he did share a trash management plan. Um, he noted that he would incinerate any of the paper trash that he has and then contain it in a bear-proof, um, container, the rest of the trash that needs to be carried off-site. Um, so with that came some feedback, we shared that out today and we did receive some feedback that, um, there's a concern of having fires on the property. So we will, in the next slide, I'll, I'll suggest a potential condition of approval that will address fire concerns. So due to those discussion items and just looking at the application overall and receiving feedback, we did come up with six conditions of approval and potentially a seven to address, um, fire, having fires on the property. So the first is to, the applicant shall request that community planning and development generate an address on CR 52 or Dry Union and mark it at the turnoff to the site. It is recommended that the marking indicate just how far up the site is. The applicant shall re-vegetate the disturbed soils and with the assistance of the Colorado Division of Parks and Wildlife and the Lake County Conservation District, develop and implement a noxious weed management plan for submission and inclusion in the CPD file number 24-18. The applicant shall submit a plan on how human-wildlife conflict as a result of trash will be minimized to CPD and the Lake County Conservation District. The applicant shall comply with all recommendations and requirements of Leadville Lake County Fire Rescue. Any development of the spring for consumptive use will require an associated water rate or augmentation similar to a well. The county shall be notified of any applications with the state division of water resources, including for a well that may be applied for in the future. All statements and representations made by the applicant through the application and hearing shall be binding and considered as conditions of approval. And to address the, um, the applicant having fires on his property, um, it's, it's up to the planning commission, of course, to suggest another condition of approval, but, um, the applicant could exercise and ensure proper fire mitigation in regards to all trash incineration or any type of outdoor fire pit must be reviewed and approved by community planning and development and the Leadville Lake County Fire Rescue.
Okay.
So that is all staff has. Any questions from the commissioners?
No.
Not at this time.
I don't think the opening statement was read. Okay, so, um, you can go ahead and read opening statement and, um, you can just explain that staffs have provided the reviewing file.
Sounds good.
Do you have it on your computer now, Joe?
I do, give it to me one second, I was trying to open it again.
You have the one?
And of course not, it doesn't, one second. All right, at this time, the Lake County Planning Commission will now conduct a public hearing. The statement I am reading shall be incorporated into and made a part of the record on these proceedings. The planning commission has jurisdiction to conduct a public hearing on a backcountry site plan review under section 3.13 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the proposed amendment should be approved. Considering that matter, the commission will address the approval criteria set forth in section 3.13.3 of the Lake County Land Development Code. The procedure followed in this hearing will be as follows. Members of the commission will disclose any ex parte communications. The county staff will make an initial presentation, which in this case has been made. The applicant may then make their presentation. After that, any other persons either supporting or opposing the application may present evidence. Supporting and opposing witnesses may be questioned by the chair, by the commission. Once questioning is concluded, no further questioning is permitted unless granted by the chair. The applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. The parties and witnesses are asked not to submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative evidence. If someone has already made the point you wish to make, please simply say so. The chair will also require that all comments be made to the planning commission and that there be no dialogue between the applicant and members of the audience. At conclusion of the evidentiary portion of the hearing, the chair will entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing and the commission will discuss and weigh the evidence. Then there will be a motion to close the discussion phase of the joint public hearing. The chair of the planning commission will entertain a motion on that application. The motion may take the form of one of the following recommendations. The first would be to approve the application with no conditions. Second, approve the application with recommended conditions. Third, approve the application with newly identified conditions. Or number four, deny the application. The planning director shall make a record of any substantial discussion on the motion and include that in the record with the decision of the commission. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the commission or to the form and substance of these proceedings? Hearing none, I'll now ask that each planning commission member, if you, if you have had any ex parte communications to disclose, and if so, please disclose them now.
Uh, Steve Stevens?
None.
Jason Rufo?
None.
David Clark Barrow?
None.
Joey Edwards?
None.
Howard Tritts?
None.
Very good. At this time, the county staff has made their initial presentation on the recording, so we will move to allow the applicant to make his presentation.
I'm going to try stand or...
Whatever, whatever you like.
Um, so I'm Tim Birch, uh, my wife and I purchased the property, um, nine years ago and we've just been camping on it since, so this has kind of been a, a dream of ours to finally get something now that the backcountry zone is, has, uh, been created. So, um, I'd like to thank the commission for hearing this and the staff for putting the presentation together. Um, it's a lot of legwork, but, um, I learned a lot and, uh, looking forward to moving forward.
Very good.
Public comment?
We can go ahead and open public comment at 4:21?
Thank you, CC.
Go ahead.
Yes, I think it's high time the county let people use their property other than tax it. That being said, I heard you mention that Beaver Lakes was one of his, uh, one of your accesses?
It is, yeah.
No, it is not, it is a private road. And it's gone through court, that it is a private road, it was purchased by Beaver Lakes, predecessor to Empire Homeowners Association.
So, can I just interrupt for just a minute? Jim, you need to make your comments to the planning commission and, and we don't have interaction between the applicant.
Oh, alright, well, I just...
So just go ahead and read that, I know, but go ahead and continue, but the comment goes to the planning commission.
It is not a public road, it has been through court, as I'm sure Howard knows. And, is access going up through either Longland Dairy or the other way up? Or any of the roads that the forest services already closed? That's another pet peeve. I guess that's all the comments I have. We have had some pretty bad neighbors go up there. They build roads across other people's property. They actually build buildings without going through any planning and zoning. And then they cause you all kinds of grief by chain and all, roads that would potentially lead you to your company. Now, that's the only comment I have, I think people should be able to use their land. And it's not a public road. And it's going to be posted as such. The judge ordered Beaver Lakes to put up these signs in court, they're going up. And they're all for it because they're having similar problems up there.
Um, would you like me to comment?
Please, yes.
Planning commission, um, so access will, um, remain, um, the responsibility of the property owner to maintain their access. So what you're hearing today is, um, the ability for him to, um, for Mr. Birch to be, uh, reviewed for site plan and the appropriateness of the site as it, it lies today and as the access issue is today. Um, so there has been historic issue, there, uh, Mr. Boyer probably has very good information that Mr. Birch might want to consider in the future. Um, but what's for the planning commission today is consideration of the site plan based on the information that we have before us. But thank you, and thank you, Mr. Boyer, for that information.
Okay, I can't, you want me to do that?
Oh, I said thank you. I said thank you.
Okay. I don't know if you agree or disagree, but yeah.
I agreed, um, that, that it will be good for you to investigate, it'll be, you know, staff's advice to the applicant would be to do further investigation and see how that may affect your access in the future.
All right, do we have anybody online that wanted to make comments? Looks like Ruth has a hand up, but that might be a cursor.
It's just the cursor.
Very good. All right, any other comment in the room? Then at this point, I would entertain a motion to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing.
I'll second that.
I'd like to make the motion first.
I'll make the motion to close this session and the hearing.
And a second?
Second.
I'll second the motion.
Very good, thank you. All right. Questions with the planning commission? Gentlemen online, any questions on the application?
I don't have any.
This, this is Jason, the only thing I would, um, want to just point out is that if there's, um, current fire control or ban in place that doesn't allow trash to be, uh, incinerated, that it would all be packed out, um, that, that trash mitigation plan did not override any, uh, fire conditions by the county or sheriff.
Sure, and I like the way that you made that other condition, because that would follow up with fire bans. Yeah, so, thank you, Jason, and yeah, I think we have a way to address that. Any other questions or concerns, Howard?
None.
Uh, it's a, how long is the access off of the county road to your property?
Um, quite long, but... Yeah, maybe a mile.
Okay. And just...
I do have a comment.
Please.
Yeah. He's right, that is a, it is, it's not even a county road. It's a road that is owned by Beaver Lakes and they maintain it. So it's, if you're talking about an access off of that, it's, it's not a county road.
I have another access off of County Road 7, I can get on 52.
So you can go to your property two ways, and, and that's not a part of it?
Which is the way I go a lot of times, yeah.
Uh, and then maintenance, and that last cut to your property is all, is all up to you? Is that something that you've done over the last few years? Or was that cut or remade?
Um, so off of 52, there's a spur road, um, that the county reopened, um, a few years ago, I forget, like 17 maybe? Um, that's what's about a mile, maybe three quarters of a mile to my property and then I, um, improved upon a, I think it was maybe a muckle mining road or, uh, maybe ATVs use it or something, I just widened it and, uh, extended it up to, to where I wanted to put the yurt.
Gotcha. Any other questions, gentlemen?
It's good to have two, two ways in and out.
Yeah, well, and there's the long and dairy way as well.
Yeah, you got one of them.
You have to...
It's like a final way from John's down, real happy, but...
Just a side, side comment, is it true that, uh, the, the forest service has closed Longland Dairy?
I haven't been over there yet.
Yes, sir. Other than, you know, Howard, they've closed a lot of roads and then they want the private landowners to give access to the public after they closed the same damn roads and went to the same damn place. At this point, I don't believe it's closed. No, Longland Dairy ain't closed, uh, Brakes closed Longland Dairy. He kept closing up, and then there's another guy up there off of Longland Dairy, just as you drop an empire, he changed it. Then the people that own the dogs up there, uh, down to the bottom of Empire, they keep putting signs and stuff and, uh, stringing a wire across the road there. We've had it out.
Well, it sounds like it's good that you have three ways to access your property.
Yeah. And he's going to find out, isn't he, we still want it there.
Sure.
Not me, but the ones that are using it. And I think he should use his property, but a lot of other people's.
At this point, I would entertain a motion to, uh, close the discussion phase of the joint public hearing.
And does the pair there is any more discussions, so I'll make that motion, close this second.
Can I get a second?
Second, Steve Stevens?
Thank you. All right, any questions for staff? None. May I see the updates to your conditions?
Just look at the top.
Understood. These were both the same, just worded differently?
It could be one condition or two conditions. It could be one lumped together or two separate?
Okay. Yeah, I think I agree with you. Make them two. One second. Fellas on Zoom, we were going to add two additional conditions to the conditions that were mentioned in the printed motion. Number seven, let's see here, let me get to the right place. We have six conditions currently. We were going to add number seven and number eight. Number seven would read applicant shall exercise and ensure proper fire mitigation in regard to all trash incineration. And number eight would be any type of outdoor fire pit must be reviewed and approved by CPD and the Lake County, Leadville Lake County Fire and Rescue. Any modifications to either of those, Jason, or anyone else?
I think that sounds good. Will they be seven and eight? Or will they be six and seven? And then number six be made number eight? I don't know.
No, absolutely. We'll rearrange them. So it would be, yeah, number six and seven. And then six currently would go to the last point. All right. The chair would entertain a motion. Would you like to read?
Yeah, I will. Let me borrow your computer. Okay.
It's starting here. And we'll leave that.
Yeah. I move that the Planning Commission conditionally approve file number 24-18 Birch Backcountry Zone Site Plan Review pursuant to the standards of Section 5.2.2.7.1. Site plan review and further find that the approval criteria pursuant to the Lake County Land Development Code, Section 5.2.2.7.1 parentheses D, have been met as evidenced in that staff report dated June 24th, 2024 for file number 24-18 and is conditioned as follows. Number one, applicant shall request that Community Planning and Development, parentheses CPD, generate an address on County Road 52, parentheses Dry Union, and mark it at the turnoff to the site. It is recommended that the marking indicate just how far up the site is. Two, applicant shall re-vegetate the disturbed soils and with the assistance of the Colorado Division of Parks and Wildlife and the Lake County Conservation District, develop and implement a noxious weed management plan for submission and inclusion in the CPD file number 24-18. Three, applicant shall submit a plan on how human/wildlife conflict as a result of trash will be minimized to CPD and the Lake County Conservation District. Four, applicant shall comply with all recommendations and requirements of Leadville Lake County Fire Rescue. Five, any development of the spring for consumptive use will require an associated water right or augmentation similar to a well. The county shall be notified of any applications with the State Division of Water Resources, including for a well that may be applied for in the future. Six.
Oh, yeah, we're going to do that.
The order doesn't really matter. Yeah, the order doesn't. It doesn't matter, but.
Okay. We'll, we'll put it in. Six, applicant shall exercise and ensure proper fire mitigation in regards to all trash incineration. Seven, any type of outdoor fire pit must be reviewed and approved by CPD and LLCFR. Eight, all statements and representations made by the applicant through the application and hearing shall be binding and considered as conditions of approval. And further finding that, one, as conditioned, the proposed site plan is in substantial conformance with the express purposes, intents, goals, and policies of the Lake County Comprehensive Plan and any ancillary county acknowledged or adopted documents pertaining to natural resource protection, affordable housing, infrastructure management, or any area-specific community plans. Two, as conditioned, the proposed site plan conforms to the requirements and provisions of this code. Three, as conditioned, the proposed site plan adequately addresses the submitted requirement items. Four, as conditioned, the proposed site plan is consistent with and in harmony with neighboring land uses and future intended land uses in the area. Five, as conditioned, any potential man-made or natural hazard hazards have or will be adequately mitigated.
Second, please.
I second, Steve Stevens.
And a roll call, please, ma'am.
Do you have any discussion on the motion?
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on the most? Pretty straightforward.
Roll call, Joey Edwards?
Yes.
Howard Tritts?
Yes.
Steve Stevens?
Yes.
David Clark Farrell?
Yes.
And Jason Ruffo?
Yeah.
Very good.
All right.
Pretty straightforward. You guys did a really wonderful job prepping this one. Thank you for spelling out all of the acronyms.
Yeah, no kidding.
I really love this a lot.
I've learned that I don't know a lot of them. So I try, I try really hard to spell them.
It makes a difference.
You've got a nice area up there. It's a beautiful spot. Been up there many times. I'm 88 years old and I grew, grew up in that area and basically.
Well, we will work with you on your backcountry structural license then.
Okay.
That'll be the next step.
And then the conditions, I just worked with you with that?
Yeah, I can, I can send you a list of the final conditions. So Jason, were you, were you present at the June 10th hearing?
Yes, I was.
Okay. So I believe we have three that could approve the June 10th minutes if, if we can do that?
May we get a motion to approve the June 10th minutes?
An argument to approve the June 10th minutes?
Second to motion.
All right.
And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Are you opposed?
Just one quick thing, if you don't mind. Chair, if I would, would like to, I'm thinking about the next regular scheduled meeting, whereas we don't have an application to bring to you. We have been reviewing the possibility of introducing a new use into the code of primitive campground. A variety of different types of primitive campground have been submitted to the department for review and consideration. And so we would like to potentially make that next meeting a work session to talk about where these use might be appropriate within the county and what kind of standards you would like to see. We do have some model code for consideration. And so what I'd like to do with everyone's blessing is make that next regular meeting a work session to talk about primitive campground use. That sounds good.
That'll be July 10th and then July 22nd was the.
Major subdivision.
Major subdivision.
Sketch, right?
Very good.
Also, one of the studies of Baby Dome?
Uh, yes.
Just above that?
Yep. I always forget that.
Timber Ranch?
Or the subdivision that's on everything?
It's right across from West Woods.
Yes.
And so it's to the west of West Woods and to the north of Mountain Gate and Mountain Pines.
It's on the south side.
South side, County Road 4. Right next to Whispering Pines. Currently owned by Jack Saunders.
Very good. Any, any other staff updates for this afternoon?
I apologize for that last, not catching it during updates, but just wanted to make sure and check the temperature on doing that for our next regular meeting.
Does that sound good, everybody?
It's good to have a shoulder to lean on.
Yeah.
Thanks for keeping everything concise today, guys. All right. We will adjourn at 4:41 PM. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, guys.